I will go home to order this workshop, our vision workshop. It is Friday.
It is Friday, January 27th of 2023. This is our vision workshop. The time is 8:40. Ms. Chivino, let's put on record who's here, please.
Mr. Freyger.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Frank Huesing.
Here.
Ms. Barza.
Mr. Flavas.
Here.
Mr. Rangelson.
Here.
All right, and did anyone sign up for our citizen comment period? All right, in that case, would you read us item, our one and only item for the day?
..............................................................................
Thank you. Jonathan, could you sit in that microphone over there? Ms. Reyes, thank you. And we will let Ms. Reyes kick off today. Thank y'all for your participation yesterday. I think we did a lot of good, and we're going to continue that today. Ms. Reyes.
Good morning, everyone. It's Friday. Thank goodness. So, every day, everybody did a really fantastic job yesterday. A lot of engagement, lots of great discussion. So today, what we want to do is start off with basically doing a review of the work that we did yesterday. I know sometimes it takes some time for things to kind of, you know, marinate and sink in and think about things a little bit, so we just want to review that to make sure that we're on the right track for the rest of the day today. And so, once we get through that process, then Chantel is also going to facilitate and lead us through now looking at the outcomes and the outcome statements for each of the goals. So, what we hope to end up with is really at the end of it, we have the document that will have the final version of what this council wants to consider in draft form so that staff can go back and develop some strategies, high-level strategies, that we can bring back to council in terms of how we plan to address these items. And then, you will be seeing this at a future meeting for adoption consideration. So, that will be the day. At the end of the day, we will wrap up and we'll talk about the next steps, but, you know, as I mentioned yesterday, it's really important for us to kind of debrief on the way these last two days have gone. We want your feedback and input in terms of, did this work for you? Are there some things we can do differently? And then also ask, what did we not provide this time that will help you into budget policy to make sure that you have some information and all the information that you need moving forward? So, with that, I don't think there's anything further that I have, so I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Chantel to come over and help us review what we did yesterday. Thank you all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's Friday, come on! You did all that great work yesterday. Good morning!
Good morning.
All right, let's take a look and review. You gonna help me out with that? All right, so here was the overview of proposed goals that we captured. Quality of life and sense of place, economic vitality, public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence. We'll play with that yesterday if you can remember. Mobility and connectivity, environmental protection, and sustainability. Is that captured correctly? Yeah. Very nice. Okay. All right. When we're talking about the statements, we have the original and then we have revised, just to help clarify with that. So, at the top, you can see it was cultivate a community that promotes inclusivity and belonging as a unique sense of place due to our distinct natural, historical, and cultural assets, and commits to a high quality of life for all. The revised, as we captured, quality of life and sense of place, cultivate a community that promotes inclusivity. I can't speak today. And belonging as a unique sense of place due to our distinct natural, historical, and cultural assets, and commits to a healthy quality of life for all. Did we capture? Yes? Thank you. All right, economic vitality. The original, foster vibrant economic climate for our community through successful commercial centers, workforce development, training, and support of existing businesses. The revised, same goal, statement was foster a vibrant economic climate for our community through new commercial and residential uses, education and workforce development, and support of new and existing businesses of all sizes. Is that captured correctly? Right? Thank you. Here was another change of the goal itself, even a revision with the statement. So, the original was service and fiscal excellence, deliver quality government services in a fiscally responsible manner with a professional workforce to meet the needs of our community, enhance the quality of life, and improve community safety. We revised that particular goal, public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence, deliver quality government services, improve community safety, and enhance the quality of life in a fiscally responsible manner with a professional workforce. Captured correctly? Very nice. Mobility and connectivity, original. Goal stayed the same, of course. Revision of statement. The original was safely and efficiently move people throughout the city and improve connectivity for people of all abilities. We revised and captured improved neighborhood and regional connectivity to provide safe, convenient, and efficient multimodal system for people of all income levels and abilities. Goods and services to move throughout the city.
All right. But it comes back to the goods and services. If you put it before people, it really sounds better. But we said we wanted people first, but I think now that we've seen it, I can say good services and people of all. I think it just reads...
Yeah. Very good. All right, let's take one more look. At how we captured. Improve neighborhood and regional connectivity to provide a safe and convenient system for the service and people of all income levels and abilities to move throughout the city. That flows a little bit easier, I think. We're all good? Captured correctly? Awesome. Our original, and you can see that we had a name change on the goal as well, environmental sustainability, advance responsible stewardship of the community's natural, cultural, and historical resources through environmentally friendly policies and practices. We revised and captured yesterday environmental protection and sustainability. Underneath there, we have advanced responsible stewardship of the community's resources through innovative, environmentally friendly, and sustainable policies and practices which promote healthy lifestyles. I think we have a... Hold on, we have a comment. Tyler?
I was thinking through that and looking at it again. Yesterday, we changed, like, we had resources to do diverse, environmentally friendly, and we changed that because we didn't want to have any confusion there. And so, we substituted innovative, which has a different connotation, I think, than where we were going with the original intent. But by diverse there, we were thinking, you know, multi-factor, you know, varied, various, those kinds of things. Doesn't necessarily mean they're new and innovative. Some of our old practices are still valid and we still do them. So, I think innovative for me, after I thought about it last night, I struggled with that just a little bit, and think we should still substitute that then back with, you know, some other multifaceted or, you know, just simple various, something like that.
Best practices, which could be tried and true or new?
I think varied or multifaceted is a good, you know, way to maybe do that. The other thing I was thinking about is which promote, like, healthy lifestyles. I don't know that people necessarily will tie, the average person will tie that to environmental protection and sustainability. I mean, I think if it's which promote health and well-being, that sounds a little bit more, because mobility and connectivity, I see that more as like lifestyle-ish that could be tied to that, but health and well-being may be a better, you know, way to kind of convey that, was my thought.
Innovative, you know, 20 years ago, when they're like, hey, let's replace paper bags and plastic bags, we don't cut down a tree, thinking that was an innovative environmental approach, it really wasn't. So, I think various kind of captures what we're trying to say of everything, and then to keep the health and everybody, healthy well-being, I think that's a good, good.
Mayor.
I get where you're going with the healthy, but I think when we say promote healthy lifestyles, when most people read this, that's going to narrow this down very small. I don't think they're going to see it as that's broadening it. I read that as, oh yeah, I need to go join Weight Watchers and... I think it narrows, I think that healthy lifestyles and maybe what somebody just said is better, that's going to limit that. That's, was it health and...
Health and well-being.
Yesterday, it really on there, middle fiscal.
I have a comment right over here. I don't want to lose it. It's Diane. Go ahead.
I was going to suggest varied instead of various.
She's elaborate, she probably is.
We will take that credibility. Was there another comment on this side? Mayor.
I'm not sure, health and well-being. I think it's better than healthy lifestyles. I'm still, that just looks to me like it is limiting, limiting it down to something I just think is limiting. And I think that if we want to talk about health and well-being of our community, I think we need to go back to the first one and put the health and well-being in that one, not environmental and sustainability.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe we, I guess the other option would be is to put it, you know, put the period after practices. And then, maybe even if we were to put, I mean, health and well-being is, I understand is an important component, then we can look at where do we put that in one of the outcome statements or something like that, you know, under something. So, I think... Quality of life and sense of place.
Yeah. Quality of life and sense of place.
We already have healthy quality of life.
It already has healthy, yeah, so it does have that. We need it here.
Would a better word be public health, since a lot of environmental protections are for public health, clean water, clean air?
That's where we were going, but I... Yeah.
Did you capture that?
I still think it needs to be in one of the supporting statements. Yeah. Thank you.
A guy I worked with years ago says, when you don't know what to put, put a period, and it works about 90% of the time.
Well, we'll have a period.
Okay. Any other, what other comments? I forgot it. I'm good. Okay, Mayor.
We've started working on these and improving them, I do believe, with the first ones. Your question was, is that where we ended yesterday? And we said yes, but we didn't get an opportunity on the first ones to say if we thought of something that might make it better. We didn't get that opportunity on the first ones. Is now the time?
Sure, absolutely. Do we want to go back to the first one? I guess quality of life and sense of place? Do we, did we capture this and want to make it better? Sure.
So, the comment I have here is, we start out with the... We start with the title, quality of life and sense of place, and the first, everything through the second semicolon is, talks about sense of place, and the last statement talks about quality of life. Do you want to change the title, sense of place and quality of life, because that's the way the syntax reads below it? That's only, that's the only comment I have on that one.
Need the forming of the statement itself.
Yeah.
I get, I get your point, and I thank you, because I usually catch things like that. But in this particular case, I think it's okay to leave it the way it is, because cultivate, they all start with verbs, and the cultivate goes to the right section, and then we talk about, you know, who we are, and there's that healthy quality of life for all, instead of a high quality. Okay, yeah, this is where the healthy thing goes. I don't have a...
But it's a good point.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I don't know, just wanted to keep hammering and bringing up, because, you know, sometimes I think our biggest audience is in this room right now. But the whole concept about health, you know, we're coming through a pandemic, people's health needs to be a priority, mental, physical, everything, so, I don't know, because, I said, the biggest audience are now sitting in this room.
Any, what other comments around the goal, the description? All right. Thank you. Then, the next, economic vitali... Vitality? Vitality. Sorry. The coffee hasn't kicked in yet. Go ahead, Mayor.
The new commercial and residential uses, I'm still not thinking we captured that. The problem is, I can't think of how we're going to fix that, but maybe even before council adopts it, we'll come up with something. The concept is there, it's going to remind us, I'm just not sure that wording is going to say to the public what we're really trying to get across.
Comments around the room?
Yeah, and I, I thought we took education and out and just left in workforce development. Education is part of workforce development. Were we concerned that the public wouldn't see that?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez was commenting, don't have any ands we have to do. I mean, what would you want?
I agree with her, but I'm not giving up the concept. Education is part of workforce development, will the public see that?
I'd like to put education in there, but it is redundant.
I think yesterday, you landed on the public would understand education.
I think that's going to make it education common, workforce development is an entity of itself.
I, exactly. I think that's what we need to do. If we're going to put education in there, and then they're going to think we want to run school district, but that's...
But I don't think it's that. I think education and workforce development are different, they have different connotations to different people. You know, when you think about people who are with trades and things like that, I think that's what workforce development a lot of time goes to, is like trades and workforce development of people, whereas education is more about the academic element, I think, of higher education and...
I can put that inside workforce development, but if this is what we need, that most people will understand, I'm okay with education, but I agree, we need to take out the and and put a comma.
You mean, take out the comma and put in the and?
No. What you just did was good.
Okay, perfect. Perfect.
The other thing with education too, we kind of discussed, is our role to kind of inform the community about exactly what economic vitality might mean, you know, what all the different changes to kind of the economic environment might mean for them to, so there's an education for public to the city to, so that's kind of, I guess, jumped on me yesterday too.
It sounds like we're going to keep education.
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have the public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence. Comments around the revised?
I like it, but we've got quality of life now as a topic in another one, so might we reword quality of life there.
Yeah, I think we can take the quality of life out of there. Deliver quality, deliver quality government services, improve community safety in a fiscally responsible manner with a professional workforce.
Good with that. The only thing that bothers me about this one is, yes, we want to work in a fiscally responsible manner. I think we do now. If I were in the public and look at that and go, oh, they're going to do that in the future, they haven't been doing that so far, so it's good, but I'm a little concerned about that, but I'm okay with leaving it in, because we are going to do it, but we're going to continue doing it. We could, we could have that discussion about continuing on everything that's out here, because we're doing a good job of a lot of this right now, I think.
Good morning, Mayor Council. Just a real quick note on my sincere appreciation that we added public safety. So, I got the preliminary 2022 numbers early this morning, I just wanted to give you perspective. So, I'll start with 2012 and contrast that to 2022. In 2012, we had one homicide. Last year, we had zero. We had 27 rapes in 2012. We had 99 last year. We had 28 robberies in 12. We had 46 robberies last year. We had 557 assaults. This, last year, we had 1,337 assaults. We had 253 burglaries. Last year, we had 208. And then in 2012, we had 107 vehicles stolen, thus last year, we had 216 vehicles stolen. So, the workload has gone up exponentially in those years, so shout out to you for adding public safety. Thank you.
Could you email us those numbers, and if we can find the population for 2012 would be helpful?
Will do.
Thank you. And possibly university enrollment.
The numbers you just gave us does not include the university, correct?
Right. The university is its own reporting entity as far as NIBRs and UCRs, so they're completely separate from our numbers.
Do we have access to that? Do y'all have access to their numbers?
Yeah, they reported to DVS just like we do, so we can access those.
Chief, it's important to also remember that those numbers do reflect university students living on campus that report some of those crimes.
Right. Thank you.
Still, it would be good to know what, it would be good to know what their numbers are also, see if it's kind of the same with their population increase.
Plus, it makes a picture of what's really happening in our public city.
Oh, yeah, you can't, that's a huge geographic chunk.
Laurie, wasn't 2012 the year that they jumped our population to 50,001?
2010 census.
I think 2012 was the year they moved it to 50,001, because they didn't, we didn't feel that the year was below, and they gave up with it, but it was after I got here, and I believe Jim was the city manager, so I was thinking, you might remember, but I've got, and I can look it up.
I was going to say, we officially claimed 50,000 before the 2010 census, and then the 2010 census showed us lower, so technically claimed it before. Yes, exercise our ETJ rights, that's absolutely right. We did not back down from that when we were shown lower, so we've maintained that. We were over 50,000. I think it was 2007 or eight.
When the chief was given those stats, I did some gut stats, when I was like, if it's more than double, then it's outpaced our population growth.
We have another comment?
I have another question. Do that our surrounding cities are also growing just as much, doesn't that impact San Marcos as well on crime and everything else? The populations, that is. Let's take these count, Cal, for example, and other areas.
It certainly impacts the number of people that are, that are frequenting our bars downtown, since we are the only city of that group of cities that have between, including...
I think we have to take that in consideration also, when you're, surrounds the cities are also growing just as much.
People visit the bars, but also the river, and hotels, and restaurants, and everything else too.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other comments around this particular goal and statement? Here we are, the revised and the statement again of how we captured. Any comments, discussion around this goal or statement? All right. And there...
July 2011 to July 3012, the city's estimated population swelled to 50,001, an increase of 4.9%, the Census Bureau reported, community impact.
Thank you. Okay. So, now, the next step of this, we have our outcomes to the goals. I'm gonna, we're gonna show them here, and I'll also put them here. We talked about possibly polling the group to see if yesterday, the way we did yesterday, did the group, and circulated around the, the goal and the statements, if that worked, or if you wanted to just come together as a whole, and we do the yes, no, and play with the outputs, if there's some concerns or value add you want to have. So, let's poll the group now. Do we want to do it all together as one, or do we want to go ahead and break up and get into groups similar to the sequence of order we had yesterday? to go ahead and break up and get into groups similar to the sequence of order we had yesterday? All as one? One voice? One team. All right, let's do it. So the first is quality of life and sense of place. I'll put it here as well. All right, we have comprehensive planning, strong community engagement, downtown vitality, arts, culture, and special events, parks, open space and recreation, neighborhood preservation and enhancement, housing affordability. I think also Hayden, he emailed everyone as well, if you want to take a look at it on your laptop. And we also have handouts on the table as well. All right, so let's talk about them. There is a worry I need to... Thank you. Okay, so... Here it is. Okay. Under comprehensive planning, we have complete and utilize the city's comprehensive plan and other council-adopted master plans as our guiding principles for decision-making. Under strong community engagement, foster a sense of community by engaging residents and community partners. Under downtown vitality, we have continued investment in the downtown area and capitalize on opportunities to preserve its historical character and enhance opportunities for redevelopment. Under our arts, culture, and special events, we have promote arts, culture, and special events as a driver to improve quality of life, increase tourism, and support local economic development. Under parks, open space, and recreation, provide an accessible, diverse, connected network of parks, open spaces, and recreation facilities to serve the entire community. Under neighborhood preservation and enhancement, protect and enhance the natural, cultural, and historical resources of all San Marcos communities through neighborhood improvements, stabilization, intentional growth, and compatible development. And finally, that output, housing affordability, facilitate safe and affordable housing for all populations, including those experiencing or who are at risk of homelessness. Let me talk about that. How do we feel, Mayor?
And the first one, complete and utilize the city's comprehensive plan, do we need other council-adopted master plans, or can we just say other master plans? I'm not sure what the purpose of council-adopted in there is because we adopt any master plan, don't we? Just call them master plans. I think there's just two words we take out.
Well, it doesn't change anything.
Hello, okay. Just an example of a plan that staff worked on is the Strategic Housing Action Plan that hasn't been adopted by council. So it's technically out there. It's on our web, but it's not approved. So that might be providing the clarity that until you have seen it and approved it, we should not be operating off of the instructions that are there.
I, yeah, I don't know why it's out there for people to start using if it's not adopted. I think it still says draft on it, but I know developers are using it, and that's on my list of, if that completed. But is that a master plan?
Action plan.
Yeah, this says master plan, something an airport master plan, parks master plan. I think when we say master plans, to me, that's, that's not working. Yeah, it's a direct level.
All right, when we look at comprehensive planning, what other comments do you have? Yes, Mayor?
So close to completing the master plan, do we really need to say complete and utilize, or can we just go straight to utilize? If five, a year from now, that, well, six months from now, that's not going to make sense, and it's going to sound like we still haven't done it.
We have an estimated adoption date in April, so I think that would be okay.
By the time this gets back to us for final adoption, we'll be real close to that.
Absolutely.
All right. We have a, go ahead, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm in here. Go ahead.
Not sure that's the right word, but I think we're going the right direction. We might, we might come up with something. Once, once we have more time to think about it, comes back to us for final adoption, maybe somebody. But to me, that's, yeah.
Okay. And strong community engagement, foster sense of community by engaging residents and community partners? I have some.
Whoever's got a mic in front of you, if you see somebody raise your hand, would you start passing that mic?
I was just thinking in terms of making it a more action statement and flip it and say engage residents and community partners to foster a sense of place or whatever, to foster a sense of community.
Looks like we have some thumbs up. Any comments?
I'm looking at everyone, not just council for, are y'all good with it? Engage, not engaging.
Who are community partners?
Every, every month, our executive team, and I know it's not just on our team because there's also at the staff level, but the executive team meets with the school district, Hays County, the university, the chamber, G S and P. So that's what we were looking at, trying to continue.
I think, I think engaging them and engaging our community partners, those are different processes, but it's all engaging, so I can...
Well, I think community partners are also our nonprofits, and I mean, it's anybody we deal with.
That, that's what I was gonna bring up as well, like the nonprofits, in addition to everything that Ms. Reyes said. And I know we do that, but I think it's good to articulate that out loud.
You have a comment down here, Ms. Sanchez?
I might suggest promote in place of foster, now that it's in the middle of the sentence.
Additional comments, thoughts?
Yeah, it was jumping out at me. We had 12 words, we had community twice. I really liked the community partners, engage residents and community partners. And I just don't know what else we put in there, but it's just having it in there twice in the short run. It's jumping out at me.
I agree. I think there's a better term for a sense of community. I just don't have it in my noggin right now, but it can be something we like write down and find. This one is also, I know it's repetitive a little bit, but remember the name of this one is quality of life and sense of place. So if you wanted to put the sense of place as a placeholder right now until we think of something else, but that could be, you know, how we can change it at this time, just because it plays off of what the title of the goal is. Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I think there's, yeah, a better word than community, which is a place.
Belonging, we have that in the goal statement.
I'm going to say this because I'm not sure if I was hearing, belonging? That's not, could we leave words in italics that we know we want to come back and work on so we can find those easily? I like the belonging, though.
It could be a sense of belonging and inclusivity. I mean, that was what was in the actual inclusivity and belonging. I mean, that could be. I like that. I like belonging because when you feel like you belong, you want to participate.
What other comments? Definitely want to please hear from everyone around the table. All right. I think the next one is downtown vitality, continued investment in the downtown area and capitalize on opportunities to preserve its historical character and enhance opportunities for redevelopment.
So I have a question. To preserve its historical character, we know that around the square there's historical character, but beyond that, it's gone beyond that. So how can we phrase that where it's not just historical character?
I'm sorry, I missed your point.
So around the square, there's historical character of the buildings. The buildings still have historical character. Beyond, right around the courthouse square, so like the new buildings...
But this says downtown. It doesn't say the square.
Right. So it says to preserve its historical character. So we're saying that the entire downtown has to preserve its historical character. What I'm saying is, there's historical buildings around the square, but beyond that, it's not historical. So what historical character are we preserving beyond the square?
I think the point would be if it is to preserve it, and if it isn't, it doesn't apply. Because you can't preserve historical character if it doesn't have it already. Does that help? Do you have a comment?
Now, are we talking about the structures, or characters so broad?
Well, I think every, there's beyond, when I think historical character, I'm thinking the buildings because they have the history of San Marcos. So around the square, when we promote historic, we promote the square, as in those buildings still have history and character. But beyond that, there's, when I think of history, I think of hundred-plus years, or not even that, in San Marcos. But outside of that, there are all recent buildings. And we don't want to say, well, now you have to build a building that has the historical character to be similar to the buildings around the square.
I think we already did that.
Back in the 60s and 70s, everything was built pretty much around the courthouse, all the main stores and, but I understand where you're going with this.
I agree with you, though. There's more than just the buildings. There's character and stories, for me, that are historic. It's not just buildings. It could be a person, it could be...
I'm not a fan of adding words, but what if we put unique and or something like that? So we're leaving historical in there because I think that's important, but also acknowledging that not everything's historic, but it definitely is unique.
Could we, could you copy that text and put it down into revised so we don't lose? Because I, I start to forget what we had.
Yeah, it took me three of them to forget that, didn't it?
I, I don't have a problem with this preserve its historic character. There are a few buildings that are off the square that are, you know, lead all the persuasions. I'm more concerned about capitalizing on opportunities to preserve because it sounds like that's the only way we're talking about preserving is to capitalize on opportunities. I don't think that's what you meant.
Yeah, I think the mayor's on to something there. The continued investment in downtown area, area to preserve the unique and historical character and capitalize on enhanced opportunities. I think you put the capitalize on the redevelopment.
Capitalize on opportunities.
Yes.
Take out the and, capitalize on opportunities. Okay, just, just cut it. Don't delete it. That, that solves my concern. But when we're talking about investment, are we talking about our investment or promoting business investment? Because Kelly Franks used to give us a report, I guess, every year, and it went back for a number of years, of how much private investment had gone in, in the downtown area. I don't think we do that anymore. I don't know if we have that data. And I would have to say we have to do it again. But the purpose was, this is what private is putting in.
And I think we left it broad on purpose, just because, you know, the council with your new economic development policy, there are a lot of programs in there that involve, you know, private investment and even some partnerships with the city. So, yes, so I think that's why we kind of kept it that way, so that it would be more broad and inclusive.
This change fixes my issue with the first part. You have another comment right on the side, Sam?
I was, I was just going to meet Mr. Unpopular and ask, when I consider the downtown area from a public safety perspective, we have a bar district, and we have a university that's known as a party school. What does this do to change the culture associated with all of the above, which invites issues into San Marcos? Like you said, I don't necessarily want to be part of all that vibrant activity. And so when I read this, I, I wonder, are we trying to capture any different complexion in downtown?
To that point, our downtown always felt like, and I've said this to people, our downtown is almost bipolar. It has a daytime personality and has a late night personality. This speaks to the daytime personality and the needs for that. It's almost, we're almost looking for a different statement to address what you just said.
Well, and we've also talked about wanting to have, encourage different types of businesses downtown. So it's more like it was 30 years ago that some of us remember, where there were actually shops and, and remember going in and laying out custom necklaces with beads and, you know, and Paper Bear was just the last one to lose that. But that's something that's been in our strategic plan for a while, is trying to do what we can to help encourage new businesses that are not bars and tattoo parlors to come downtown. So I don't see that, you're right, I don't see that this is a goal, well, whatever, whatever these are, to try to change that mix.
Yeah, I was just going to add, it might be implied, and I thought that it might be good to explicitly state that our goal is to make downtown a place of, a destination place, to have destination in there somehow.
To have enough shopping to make it worthwhile for Kissing Tree to rent a bus and bring some people downtown in the afternoon, maybe some lunch.
And the connectivity that we're going to work on with our park signage to try to tie the river and the downtown area. So maybe there is something that we can do there. And that could also be something with the strategies, you know, once we develop the strategies as staff, that can be one of the things that we could do, is to try to tie downtown to, you know, river or other destinations within the community, to try to get, you know, foster that sense of coming downtown when you come here for the river or the outlet mall or whatever as well. So just a thought there.
Well, I wanted, you know, I support the chief's, you know, being, want to make sure downtown is safe. I also want it to be a fun place, a vibrant place, a place that people want to go to, destination even during bipolar times. So I don't know if somewhere in here we could put in safe. I know, you know, we're doing that with, you know, cameras, increased patrol presence, all those kind of things.
Safe destination.
Yes, a safe destination. But we've had uptick in the type of crimes that are not normal to San Marcos, you know, gunfire, things like that in our downtown. So incorporating the safe. And then I got one more thing. We're talking about the bipolar. So downtown during the daytime, I can experience this as a county employee when... the daytime, I can experience this as a county employee, when the county used to be downtown, we're talking hundreds of employees that were at the annex, the courthouse, the justice center, and then everyone that came to court, that whole footprint left. And, you know, I worked downtown.
And the attorneys.
And the attorneys. And I mean, we're talking hundreds of people that were in our downtown in nine to five because of that footprint. And when the county moved to the new building, it was like night day. So, you know, is this an opportunity to talk about City Hall and, you know, potentially moving City Hall back downtown where it used to be a long time ago? But yes, incorporating a safe destination, I think that's important because the uptick in violent crime down there. I definitely still want downtown to be a fun place for people to come and enjoy themselves. And also, when we talk about, you know, the Paper Bear being closed, things like that, there's also been other, the sales tax, if we took out alcohol, I imagine it's still shot up, not exponentially, but just more than exponentially. I mean, there's a target down there. There's, I mean, there's a significant amount of new stores, you know, every weekend you drive by the courthouse, you just see people out the sidewalks. There's, there's a lot going on in our downtown. It still makes it vibrant during that bipolar, during the daytime as well.
We have two comments, one from Mr. Gonzalez and then one from Tyler. And then, okay. Okay, listen to that.
I think what we need is give those residents a reason to go downtown, other than the restaurants. If we put them up downtown where they got to go and get tags or whatever, I'm just using that for an example, pay some kind of bills, that will give them a reason to come downtown. At the same time, I just want to eat lunch where I'm there, shop a little bit. I don't think shops, it's just going to do it by itself. I think we have to put something else in this place.
Tyler, do you want to, do you have a comment?
I was just going to add. I was just going to add that the other goal that's economic vitality has a separate bullet that's San Marcos as a destination, not just a downtown focus, but the entire city. I said, when we get to economic vitality, there's a, San Marcos as a destination is underneath that.
That's a good point. And I think, you know, what we need to just kind of keep in mind maybe is that it's helpful for us to get kind of where council wants to go in terms of your interests with these things. Because what it'll help us is when we're developing those high-level strategies, these are some of the things that we will then, you know, try our best to incorporate. You know, I wouldn't want to put City Hall in the overall goal statement, but that could be a strategy, you know, is that council's given us direction to explore the possibility of, you know, City Hall in the downtown area. So that could be one of the things that y'all asked us to, because y'all did ask during the work session, y'all said that that was the council consensus, was look in the downtown area. And then y'all gave a secondary, if that didn't, we couldn't find property and couldn't find something feasible, then to look over here across, you know, across City Hall, the current location. So, you know, there could be strategies that we use instead of it being within the supporting statements.
Mr. Gleason had said, but and inviting, a safe and inviting destination. But I want to bring up something here, this probably isn't the right place, but I want to get it out there. And that is, I'm not seeing a lot of stuff in here about children. I get complaints from people saying there's not children's activities, you know, the Dollar Movie is gone from downtown. And, you know, and I explain to them that a lot of those don't make a lot of money. You're not going to have that in a high rent area. And thank goodness, the city does what we do for summer programs, because that's some of the only stuff that's out there. But I'd like for us to keep in mind, not necessarily on this slide, but what are we doing for children? Do we want to throw in people of all ages somewhere? Maybe it should have been the previous one. But the woman who has no children is talking about, what are we doing for children? And people do look to us for that.
So actually, I brought this up with my group, you know, that's a complaint I hear, you know, that there's not enough things for families and children to do. I don't think that. I always have a lot of things to do with my family, but our group brought up, like, well, actually, the complaint is there's no place they can drop their kids off.
Because we have parks and we have wonderful places for people to go as a family, because you're right, they want to drop the kids off for a while.
When I heard that, I was like, what? Yeah, that's, you know, family touch, oh, yeah.
No, but I do think, and the mayor's right, that's why we kind of wanted the inviting thing. Look, we're spending a significant amount of money for tours, Main Street is spending a lot of time and money on trying to create some programs and think, you know, Movies on the Square, Bubble Fest, and all the things that are out there. We're trying to make it an inviting destination for the daytime activities for the kids on the weekend, you know, during the day and the weekends for the kids, and then have that nighttime crowd that we have, we all know we have. So I think making it a safe and inviting destination for people of all ages. I mean, I think that kind of encompasses what we're trying to kind of get to.
The events we do, like the Art Square, the thing that, there's a lot of things for families to do in the daytime that our city promotes or is driving involved with.
Oh, yeah, trails, parks, absolutely.
All right. Oh, okay. Wonder if we can add of all ages and backgrounds, because if y'all follow me on social media, you will recognize my various rants about how the, like, the music, the concerts in the park, like, I would never listen to that music. So, stuff like that would be cool. Additional comments? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman.
It just takes a second and then it'll pick up.
Could we somehow put the word inclusive there and kind of combine ages and backgrounds? Can I get to that?
I think all that's good, but I think we're on the wrong slide.
Downtown, very fond of, just of all ages and backgrounds.
I just want to make sure that we don't limit that thought to downtown.
Okay.
I'm okay here, but I think it needs to be somewhere, we need to make it as an overarching statement, somewhere, maybe in the goals. I don't, I think it is kind of in there. Inclusive. Anyway, but yes, I think the whole idea of all ages and all backgrounds needs to be through everything. Okay. Do we want to go ahead to the next? Arts, Culture and Special Events. We have Promotes Arts, Culture and Special Events as a driver to improve quality of life, increase tourism and support local economic development. Comments? All right. We're good to move on? Parks, Open Space and Recreation, provide an accessible, diverse, connected network of parks, open spaces and recreation facilities to serve the entire community. Yeah, thumbs up.
What was the purpose of the word diverse?
Is that that we've got improved parks and we've got walking trails and I'm not sure, but I think we need to come after diverse.
Okay, okay, I got it. You mean different options, different things to do?
Yeah, skate park and golf park and.
Okay.
I think.
There's some people that may take that a little bit different, but.
Well, it's talking about the parks, not the people who use them.
Yeah.
In this particular case.
Gotcha. Just for conversation. Thank you.
But here's where we might be able to, instead of the entire community, for all ages and backgrounds and abilities.
Yeah, it brings a vibe of intentionality, right? That we're being intentional and being inclusive of those three categories. Get you, Mayor.
I think Parks Department does a good job of that, but I think it definitely needs to be in there of the abilities and backgrounds, especially the abilities.
And we're doing a good job of that. I'm wondering if we want to take out the entire community, because we do have those parks that are draws tourism and things like that. So just. To serve all ages, backgrounds and abilities?
All right, let's go ahead. Oh, no, one second. No, we don't. All right. The next is Neighborhood Preservation and Enhancement. Protect and Enhance Natural, Cultural and Historic Resources of All San Marcos Communities Through Neighborhood Improvements, Stabilization, Intentional Growth and Compatible Development.
I'm going to call Greg out on this a little bit, sorry. But I think this statement captures the hard components of neighborhood enhancement pretty well. But, you know, we have an entire department called Neighborhood Enhancement. In undergraduates' leadership, some of the things that they've done are to establish programs that touch on the softer components of neighborhood enhancement, like building stronger relationships among neighbors. Greg's thought has always been, if neighbors take care of each other, they don't burden us as much as city government officials. So I think we need some components of that thing here. I'm worried for it, but Greg, you might can talk a little bit about some of those programs and how we can somehow incorporate those. We have tooling and programs, we've got a neighborhood block party trailer, and there's all kinds of stuff that we're doing that encourages neighbors to work together better.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't know what word would be. Adding your neighborhood programs, yeah. That works.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I like that. Because so much of what we were talking about was just improvement, stabilization, potential, but I think a neighborhood, I don't necessarily think of, you know, necessarily improvements. My sense of neighborhood comes from a lot of different things. The programs come into play in that. So I think that's a way to kind of include that.
The programs kind of play into the engagement piece too, because it gets neighbors together and working together or playing together.
I like that we're adding that. I just wish there was a better term to articulate to a reader, that our neighborhood programs, what we mean is the things that cultivate those relationships. But I guess they can come check out this video and hear the conversation. Because if that's too wordy, I'm not going to be able to come up with a better word. I think neighborhood programs is probably the best, I've got it.
Do we have fair comment?
Yes. May I ask about the term communities in this statement? Because when we say community in other goals, we're talking about the San Marcos community. Now we're saying San Marcos communities as if there are more than one. Neighborhoods, then we have neighborhood programs. So then we're duplicating the term neighborhood.
You could put programs there and then take out neighborhood in front of programs for programs improvement.
Could we replace the second neighborhood with support? Any support programs? Yeah, or some, like a relationship programs? I'm not too sure.
Can we take out San Marcos? Chase the jam. Okay. Go ahead, Mayor. I'm going to tell you that the folks that are concerned about preserving neighborhoods from, I'll just say intrusion of different types of land uses, this isn't going to speak to them. And I'm like, kind of one of them, so. That's, I mean, maybe the comp plan is a better place for that, but anyway, just saying. And the other thing is, this isn't the place to go. I'm just going to throw it out there. We didn't talk, we're not talking about our four-legged friends anywhere in here. Just a thought. Other comments around the room? Are we ready to move from this one? All right. This is the last output under the goal Quality of Life and Sense of Place. Housing Affordability. Facilitate safe and affordable housing for all populations, including those experiencing or who are at risk of homelessness.
I thought that the word population was a little odd there. I tried to Google some synonyms of socioeconomic, but if you just Google populations, people will come up. There weren't a lot of options for socioeconomic.
Do you have a comment? Does that word even add anything? If you take it out, it's for all, right? Go ahead, have a comment?
I'm not sure how to wordsmith this, but I would be interested in exploring how we could include also preventing displacement. So, or even just, right? Well, I don't know. Those are like two separate things. Let me think about this, you guys. Just throwing that out there. If you guys get any brilliant ideas, DM me.
Mayor? I'm just going to, while y'all are thinking about this, I'm going to borrow a little time. I'm not, I'm not going to argue to change it. I'm not sure what facilitate means there.
Well, I don't, I mean, I think we can come up with something different if we would like. I think the main thing is, you know, trying to make sure it's something doable that the city can do ourselves. And if it's to provide, we cannot provide. So I think that's where. If it's support or something like that, we can do. But I think that's where, you know, it's trying to define again in all of these, like, what is the city's role? Where we can't be all things to all people, but we can be conveners, we can support efforts. So I think, you know.
I think facilitate may be the right one because partners.
Partners, all of our light sea projects, you know. Like you said, we cannot provide it all, but this doesn't say anything about we're working with other people to help us. We've modified our land development code in ways that I wasn't terribly thrilled about. That was supposed to facilitate more affordable housing, and I don't know that it's done that, but a lot of people are buying what's coming.
The only thing I will say is that support to me, and this may just be me, it seems a little less active too. Facilitate is more of an active word.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting support.
So maybe it's something else if it's not facilitate. But I think we were trying to say, like, you know, we were doing more than just standing by and watching and saying, oh, we support you. It was more about, we were an active engagement in some way. So the facilitate word was why that was doing that. But if it doesn't speak to everybody that way, then we can find another word.
I think there's a better word than facilitate. Maybe we should just italicize it. Because facilitate to me, it's like, are we just facilitating a conversation? Because that's how our community perceives it, that we're just talking a bunch of smack about it and not doing it, when we're actually doing a lot of work towards it.
So we have housing in economic vitality as well. And we talk it, talk it at a different level in economic vitality. And here, we're specifying housing affordability. So do we, is this addressing a different, because quality of life also addresses, you know, economic vitality as well in a different sense of making sure housing is available. know, economic vitality as well, and a different sense of making sure housing is available for all populations, and not just affordability or a risk of homelessness, because to me, a sense of place also has higher level of living and quality, a higher level of housing as well, so just a thought there.
You're right, but I think this is such an important topic that it deserves to be called out several.
When I went to Marion West Street, the only other word that kind of jumped out me was promote, but I think facilitate is better than promote. I don't think there's, I don't know what else to put in there, but.
So we're agreeing that, other than the first word that leads us to this one, we want to just go ahead and italicize that, or underline it and come back to that word? You're fine.
Okay.
Doris, was it the who are at risk of homelessness, the displacement, do we want to italicize that?
My brilliance will come to me at night, and I will bring it up later, it's fine.
We have time before this comes to us for adoption.
What about this adding, who are at risk of homelessness or displacement?
What other comments? All right, that. Oh, we did.
One more. Someone give me an example, if you're gonna facilitate, what actually are y'all gonna do? Give me an example of how you would do that.
Seek out, bring people together, have a conversation.
I just wanted to be able to explain that if someone were asked, this is what we meant by, was reaching out to.
I think your question will be answered when staff goes into how we're going to do those things. I think that will provide your answer. Is that fair to say?
Yes, and also like providing opportunities, you know, so whether it's through policies or through, you know, zoning and things like that, that the council would do. So I think that that was the thought process, but again, we're not married to that word if there's a better word. I think it was just trying to show there was more of an active role that we were playing versus just sitting back and having conversations about it.
I agree with that, I think.
But what you put under it is gonna be, I think, what Mr. Gonzalez is looking for is what, how do we tell the public what we're doing? That will be the, the things that come under it.
Mayor, you can always read my mind, thank you for that.
You have one more comment?
One more.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to the first output. We are at 9:53. I can feel the room may need a break. Do we need a break? Yeah, I'm not sure. Okay, let's come on back at 10:05. Five after, 10:05. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. It will then lead to the second goal and output.